Linda, we're good.
Ready.
Hereby call the City Council Meeting for September 12th to order. If I could have Councilmember Mercado lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Hand over hearts. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to a republic for its sins, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Linda, roll call.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Mercado.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andresek.
Here.
And Mayor Searah.
Here. Thank you very much. We have no reordering of the agenda tonight?
No.
All righty. We are moving on to public comments. We're doing it a little bit different tonight. We've had two items that came up that we did not have time to agendacize, so we are going to briefly have these two speakers. They're both very, very important items. Our first public speaker will be Battalion Chief Chris Childers to give us the update on the McMurray fire. Please, sir.
Okay.
It's all yours.
All right. Chris Childers, the Santa Barbara County Fire Department.
Chris, come to the microphone.
It comes out if you need to walk.
Okay. That's rather easier.
Yeah.
All right. Chris Childers, Santa Barbara County Fire Department, since 94, so I've been here a few days. We want to update on the fire here. The fire is looking really good right now. You notice when we talk about a fire, we usually talk about a fire. The McMurray incident had several, apparently was it as many as seven starts at one time. So let's look at some pictures. When we have a roadside fire, it's a pretty simple operation for the battalion chief. I just point my finger and say, "Go put that out." So the first engine, this fire right here started, the McMurray fire started at 3:30 on Monday afternoon. I was off duty, so I got called in, and at fiveish, a little bit around 5:00 o'clock, I showed up at the ICP on 101. And a new fire had just started down the road on Hoffa Highway 1, just off the 101. You all know where I'm talking about. We called that the grade fire. So I drove straight down there, got two fire engines, not brush trucks, but actual structure engines, and each of them, you take a flank. You see, this engine takes this flank right off the side of the road. The fire burns up the hill, and you can see where the fire is burning, and they're chasing it. If you show the next picture, you can kind of see how they're doing it. The engine company takes a hose, and takes, and then extend the hose by extending hoses up the hill, chasing the fire. And you can see right here where the firefighter is putting water on the edge of the burn. So pretty straightforward, they took the one flank, I sent two more engines there, we had two more engines on the other flank, and pretty soon this fire was out, and this is what it looked like. Okay. I'm sorry, it's the next one. So, it's not it either, is it? Technology. Anyway, this was a little triangle shape called the grade fire, and it's completely out that night by 9:00. And at 9:00 that night, I had to go over to the McMurray fire, which is these pictures. And we should go back to the map now, I think we've seen enough pictures, and take overnight ops, because obviously this was more complex. So think about it, we put engines on each flank here, and we're chasing this fire up the hill, and each time we have engines, we only have so many engines in the county, right? So we borrowed the Forest Service, we borrowed the Santa Barbara City, we borrowed Montecito, we had people from all over the county, and San Luis Obispo came down, and Ventura County sent us a strike team, because we had a lot to do. Now, it turned out to be 200 acres, because a lot of people, especially a lot of county and other people helpers, did a lot of really hard work. And so you saw it knocked down, but several flanks had to be taken, so it made it pretty complex, and that's why it's taken four days to handle. Plus, the heavy fuels under the oaks, which, you know, a lot of downed oaks, because we've had some oak problems in the last couple of years with all the drought. So there was a lot of heavy fuels that would burn for several days. But right now, we're looking really good, and tomorrow will be the last day with heavy staffing. By Saturday, we'll be in the patrol status as long as everything goes as planned. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Let's see, you said you had up to 400 firefighters working day and night shifts.
Right.
They were down at Riverview Park.
The night shift is typically, well, depending on what type of fire and how the fire is behaving, the night shift is oftentimes less people. That first night, Monday night, we had a lot of people out there. By Tuesday night, it was myself and a half a dozen engines and a strike team of hand crews, two hand crews. So it was a lot less people the second night, and we knocked the heat out of the fire and knocked most of it down. So this perimeter you see here hasn't really changed since basically Monday night or Tuesday morning, except that more of it has gotten black, which means we're secured the line enough that we're confident it's not going to move. Now, this map is yesterday's map, but if you were to tell me and ask me to draw the map today, it would be black all the way around it. But if I do that, I say it's 100% out, then why am I putting firefighters on it? Well, we've got to make sure it's 100% out. All right? So there's down to, I think tomorrow, we're going to have four engines, county engines, both of our county hand crews and one water tender on the fire. So not anywhere near 400 anymore, down to, that's about 75 people.
The response was incredible. The air, the helicopters, the planes, the...
And you see how the aircraft helps us get those, pinch those things, and we got some drops on the grade fire, that's why it went out before dark that first day.
It was truly impressive. Very, very impressive.
Thank you. Thanks. Chief, any preliminary on how this started and why there were multiples? I have not heard that yet. But we typically find on roadside fires like this, either some person, or more often, like parts of, I don't know if you all know this, but parts of the catalytic converter, the insides of it after it wears out, can drop off, and we'll get little chunks of superheated carbon fall out of it. And in a series like this, if somebody had a bad carburetor or a catalytic converter, it could drop little marks on the way. Now, I haven't heard if they found any of those yet. Some fires, we find little parts and say, "Oh, right there, in the middle of that burn, they found that little piece of lead," and they know that's what caused it. I don't know on this one. So it will, it's still under investigation as far as I know.
And if I recall, it was really windy.
Yes. The wind certainly helped this thing spread, and you saw how this one got a pretty far distance in this side drainage right here off the 101, this lower one. And that's the one closest to McMurray, so you see, it went pretty far in there. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And thank you all for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much for coming tonight.
No problem. You're okay.
Appreciate it. Okay. Got one more speaker. Before we get to the rest of the public speaking, I hope, I hope you're all patient, and it's okay. We have Eric Daniels from PG&E, who was able to come tonight to just give us a little explanation, little clarification on PSPS. Sir.
And a few other things.
And a few other things.
Eric Daniels, Eric Daniels with PG&E, Madam Mayor and Council. Like Rose, I'm not feeling too well tonight, so I apologize for that. We'll get through it, won't we, Rose? First of all, I want to say that the fires were not caused by PG&E. Let me just say this, that we had an outage here that took out most of the town in the afternoon. There was an incident that occurred, a pine tree that fell into the line somewhere over here on Charter, Central, rather. And then that was reduced, and that was early in the afternoon, and of course, not at all out in the fire, you know, in the fire area or in debris areas, just in town here. And then later, then these fires occurred, and of course, our response teams all get excited, and we start to figure out what's happening. Our power did not go out until after the fire had started, and then that caused another very large scale outage for both Bilton and Soling. So as you all know, I was communicating with the council members and city staff, so that you were aware, in case any constituents have been calling you. So always, I'm a resource for you with respect to things of those sorts, so don't hesitate to give me a call if I'm not available. We should have backup to help. So with that, let me tell you about community wildfire safety. Are you going to let me push it, or?
Yeah.
Well, okay. I'm thinking I'm going to have you do it, if you don't mind. You can jump to the next one. Community wildfire safety is a program PG&E has put together, a number of different series of pieces to this puzzle, and I'm going to tell you a little about all of the parts as quickly as I can, but I think it's an important topic that I want to make sure we give it to due course. A couple of different columns that are holding this umbrella up. In the first one, we're going to talk a little more about some of the wildfire monitoring stations that we're going to put together, so we can predict when fires are going to occur. As you mentioned, it was very windy yesterday, but, and it was warm, but we weren't without, we weren't beyond any of the margins that we usually experience around here, so, and there wasn't a red flag warning, so there was no PSPS on the horizon for us. And I told you that in my communication, that that was not a PSPS outage that had been taking place. I'll tell you a little more about this weather center. The yellow column, I'm going to talk to you about some of the things we're doing to make the system enhance it, doing some inspections and some renovations to it. We're going to talk about that. And then we're going to talk about the green section, which is some of the things we're going to do long-term to harden the system and make it more robust, so that when we complete all of these sorts of infrastructure improvements, we get to a place where the potential for a PSPS or a public safety power shut-off can be greatly reduced. Public safety power shut-off, we'll talk more in depth as well, so if you hit the next slide. The first one, we'll talk about the monitoring stations. As you all know, PG&E, or you may or may not know, PG&E already does have weather monitoring. We monitor the weather on a constant basis, especially during the winter season, but we do it all year round, to monitor when a storm activity is coming into the area. We do that because we want to be able to stage equipment and employees in areas where we expect that there's going, there could be damage due to weather-related issues. To help us with that, we already have monitoring stations out in the system, generally along our corridors where our transmission and our system is located, where some of our major substations are. But we're going to enhance that in this program, to enhance it so that we can have even better eyes on not just what weather is coming, but on what weather fire conditions are along our corridor, and couple those two pieces of information together, to give us a better educated expectation as to what we're going to do. We're going to install a new 1,300 weather system monitoring stations throughout our system, and this will be in the high fire and extreme fire threat areas. These are designated by Caltrans and the PUC. We'll tell you a little more about those in a second here, but in those high fire threat areas, we're going to be installing these pieces of equipment along our corridors, where we can monitor what's happening along our corridors. And then in addition, 600 new high-definition cameras along those corridors. Now, those will most likely be in a, in a much more high fire threat area, in a tier three, which will be in the Sierra Nevada, but the weather centers, we already have a good 30 of them in this area to begin with, and we're going to be augmenting some of those. Next slide, please. One of the things we're also doing is, is there's some vegetation enhancement practices going on. The PUC is about two years ago, year and a half ago, that's the Public Utilities Commission who governs our activities, instructed us to broaden the width of the clearance that we're required to do around conductors. The conductors is the wire, so on the very end of the pole arms, you see where it says four feet. It used to say 18 inches, and now they have required a four-foot clearance. So that is now the prescribed requirement system-wide, statewide, for all of the utilities, that a four-foot clearance around conductors on all transmission and distribution, even in town. The 12-foot is our goal in the high fire threat area, and that will be mostly on public and private land, but not in town, unless your town boundary goes into a tier two or tier three, which I don't believe your town does. But you have some right up against you. So the tier, the 12-foot is our goal, again, working with property owners, explaining to them the fire danger, and we're getting good response. There are some that push back, but the most part, they're, they're very accommodating. So we're working that. We're also working to take out dead and dying trees along the corridors, so that we have less activity of trees that are beyond our scope, but still have a potential falling in. And property owners have been very respectful of that and working with us. Next slide. We're also done some major inspections of the system. This was court ordered. We've already done all of the inspections in the tier two and tier three, that's where we're required to do it, on distribution and in transmission. Next slide. We have always done an inspection program, where we send a crew member up the tower, take a look inside, take pictures from the inside out, send those pictures to San Ramon, and analyze it. We've always used helicopters with a boom on the bottom, flying up against towers in the remote areas, taking pictures, sending that to San Ramon, comparing and contrasting and analyzing. We're now augmenting that with professional drone operators. Drone operators will go to each tower, again, in tier two and tier three, so not in town, and fly a drone up the outside of the tower, taking pictures, looking in, send that information up to San Ramon, and now all of that data is being analyzed together. The inspectors are looking for chinks in the coating, they're looking for rust, they're looking for any sort of fasteners that need to be addressed, and all kinds of other little things. And when they, when they identify those needs, they'll put together a packet, send it down to our service planning team. Service planning engineers will design a repair for that, and then the crews will be dispatched out to go make the repair. We're through the process of all the inspections. We're coming through the end of all the design element, and now the crews are starting to roll. So you might see in some of the areas outside of town, as the transmission lines that come in and out of the area, you might start seeing some crews working on some of those poles out in the countryside. The idea is to make the system as robust and as secure as possible, so that we don't have failures on it in the future. Next slide. That's just what I just told you. Next slide. And then, then they harden the system in the long term. The long term will take some PUC authorization to do, so we're going to be working this, but the goal is, we're going to replace wooden poles in the high-threat tier two, tier three areas with metal poles. We're going to broaden crossarms, so that they're farther away, so that they're holding conductors out farther from one another. And we're going to replace line with tree line or insulated line in the appropriate areas where it makes sense to do that. Won't be wholesale throughout the system, but it will be in places where it's needed. So those are going to be some of the big-ticket things that we're going to do in the near future, also to enhance. And again, all of that goes to the idea of trying to help make the system as robust as possible, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have to impose a PSPS. Next slide, and we'll start to talk about, let's skip that, start to actually go back to that, because I think it's important for your community, because you guys are more remote, and these are alignment closers. They're not very attractive, but they're extremely useful, and you all, you don't know it, they're really helpful to you. In the wintertime, when there's a storm coming through, and the line gets hit by a tree or a foreign object, and the power goes out, you sometimes at home, see, the lights flicker at home, and, but they don't go out? That's one of these working. There's a whole series of them that will work together. A foreign object has struck the line, the line opens, so the power doesn't go through anymore. The system automatically tries to reconfigure the grid to find a new way to get energy. And so it's trying to close that circuitry. As it does, in the winter, it's great, because it can restore your outage much quicker and isolate the damaged area, so that the larger scope of the population is not impacted, and that's what those do. But in the summertime, during the fire threat season, which of course seems to be longer and longer every year, we're going to disengage them. And so that's going to have an impact on you here, because when that happens, though automation will not work, so if a foreign object strikes a line, the system won't automatically try to reduce the footprint of the outage. It will require the crews to come out, inspect the line, and then manually close it to restore certain sectors of the circuitry. So that means that your outages in this area during summertime could be longer. So just want to make sure you and public are aware of that, because of this safety factor. Well, why are we doing this? Because as that system tries to automatically shut those, or rather, close those circuits and re-energize, if that foreign object is still on the line, every time it sends a jolt of electricity through it, it could spark, and it could create fire. So that's why in the high fire threat season, we're going to disengage the automation. Next slide. Public safety power shut-off. This is what we want to avoid. This is not something the company wants to do, but I also want you to know, it's not something new to the industry. While it's new to PG&E's tool chest, it's not new to the industry. We've just never implemented it before, and we've never had it in our arsenal of things to do. Throughout the rest of the electric world in the United States, our southern sister companies do this already. Edison has had this program in place for the last eight years. Power systems in the east use it all the time during hurricane season, and so we've learned from a lot of benchmarking with these other companies, and so we hopefully have put together a program that is as robust and as, has taken the most positive aspects of all the other ones and put it together. What happens in one of these power shut-offs is, we're not going to just flick the switch all of a sudden, because we think the weather's going to be bad. Remember that weather system I told you about? That weather center I told you about? They're prognosticating what the weather's going to be on a constant basis, and they're going to identify a few factors that are going to be important for us to make decisions upon. One of those is going to be whether there's a red flag warning. If there's no red flag warning, we're not going to be imposing one. That's the one thing that has to occur. Now, the other thing is, there's a lot of margin in, but don't think, though, just because there's a red flag warning, there will be one, but it should put you on alert. The next thing is low humidity. Well, in our area, when there's a red flag warning, it means... Well, in our area, when there's a red flag warning, it means it's really hot. And generally, in this part of the world, when it's really hot, it's low humidity. We're not like Florida, right? And then, then we're going to have, we're going to be watching on the bottom left, the fuel conditions. What kind of fuel buildup has been allowed to occur over the past however many years underneath and nearby our infrastructure? And that we are not able to manage because it's beyond our legal right to manage it. And our men and women on the ground will be observing that. Those factors will be at play before we would make a PSPS. We're going to be evaluating all of those things through a potential one. And then the most important one is going to be this forecast of very high winds. Remember, the system, you get wind here a lot, and you get hot weather here. Our system is robust as it is. It knows how to, it, there's a lot of margin built in it so that it can withstand the kinds of temperatures we're used to. So the things we're talking about are things that are beyond what we're used to, okay? So it's not going to be a normal summer day in Buellton where this is going to be imposed. It's going to be one of those most extreme kind of events. The reason for this is, everybody's putting on their air conditioners, lots of energy is being pulled through the power lines, and just like when you over-plug your extension cord, it gets kind of warm, the power lines get warm too, and they start to sag. There's margin built in for that to happen, and that's okay. But what happens is, when you have these intense winds now starting to come, and they start to cause those lines to sway because there's more swag in them, that puts tension on the towers. And that's where we start to see failure. So that's why, when the weather conditions become dangerous for the operation of the systems to operate safely, we're going to de-energize it. And that's what Public Safety Power Shut-Off is all about. Now, next slide. We don't just flip the switch. Well, let's skip that when I come back to it. Skip that one, come back to it. We don't just flip the switch when these margins, when these, when these red flags start to get into the red zone on our calculus. We're going to monitor, and at about 48 hours, our goal is to start to communicate to the public so that you have understanding that something is coming. Prior to that, we will also have already been starting to tell OES and county planning, a county emergency response and city emergency response, depends on where this is going to take place, that we may be calling a PSPS. Forty-eight hours is when the public's going to start getting noticed. I'm, my department's going to stand up to communicate to you. Rebecca's department and our, and our customer service department's going to stand up to communicate to public works directors for making sure that they're ready for the lift stations, et cetera. Our public safety specialist's going to stand up and start talking to emergency response organizations. Our other part of our customer team's going to stand up and start communicating to the public and all of our customers. And we're going to tell you a little bit here how we're trying to collect some data from our customers so that we're able to communicate with them in a, in a positive way. And then at 24 hours, again, we're going to do a reevaluation and identify whether we need to continue down this tack, or we're going to back off because perhaps the weather condition has gotten better. And then just before, and then during, and then after. Now, here's where after becomes the issue. You're going to be sitting at home thinking, oh, my goodness, the wind has subsided, subsided, and the weather is no longer hot, so why is my power still off? It's going to take some time. But that's why I said we're going to stage staff. We're going to have employees coming to this area. We're going to have crews, and we're going to have equipment coming so that as soon as the weather condition is improved, our crews can begin to inspect, restore, inspect, restore, and inspect, restore. So it's this, this very intense cadence that will occur. It's not like we can flip the switch and everybody's powered back on. Remember in 2013, those of you that lived here, we had that very large outage that occurred outside because of a failure of equipment in the Morro Bay Substation, and 150,000 customers all throughout northern Santa Barbara County and southern San Luis Obispo County were without power. If you recall that, we were able to restore that within that 24-hour period. So we can do it, and that was an outage that was not expected. Remember, here we're giving people and ourselves some time to get some things staged so we can respond more quickly. Let's go back two slides so that I can show you where, these are the high-fire-threat areas. Tier 3 is the red, Tier 2 is the yellow. Those are the high-fire-threat areas. Now, let's zoom in to Santa Barbara County, the next one. And then we can see where Lompoc is, and Buellton, sorry, is, Lompoc, Buellton, San Andres, and Solvang are all situated. You guys are riding here, and you're in the Tier 1, but Tier 2 comes right up next to you. The transmission lines that feed our area come out of the Morro Bay Substation, through Santa Maria, and then somewhat along the freeway down to a switchyard that's just north of Buellton, right about where the fire took place, but north of, we're south of where the fire took place. And then it taps off to Solvang and taps off over to, to Lompoc and down into your town. So if there is a, so those power lines come through to here, and then they come along here through this Tier 2. So the weather condition that we have to see, it's not going to matter if it's here in Santa Maria. It has to be in the Tier 2 area. Those high-intense winds, those really high temperatures, the red flag warning has to be here before we can, we would impose it on you. So while everyone should be very aware of the potential, and your emergency response teams, and I know they are, have done the due diligence to be ready for this kind of thing, the chances of something happening for us is probably more remote because we haven't even had red flag warnings of this kind in this area very often in the first place. So just know that. Take a little bit of humility with it, but be ready for it. If your community has, and if you at home have a, a response, an emergency response plan to deal with a last-minute emergency such as a large Stiglerr earthquake, which everyone in California should have, which could be a very large devastating effect to the grid and keep us out of power for a very long time while we restore, if you have that plan, you have a plan for this because you will have notification about this happening. So with that, let's go on a couple of slides, and I'll be done, and answer some questions. Next slide. Next slide. I just want to call attention to the public and ask that if you haven't updated your contact information in your account with PG&E, we ask that you do so. We'd like to have your landline, your cell number, your, any other type of pager number if you still have one, any fax number, any email that you have, so that if there's a PSPS, we have a way to communicate with you in many different forms if possible, and that information is here. Or you can simply go straight to pge.com, and on the front page, the opening banner is all about wildfire safety and PSPS, and you can click that and go in and learn a lot more information in multiple languages. So I'll answer any questions, Madam Mayor.
Any questions from the dice? I, I just had, we have a lot of seniors in our town. Oxygen tanks. When they have equipment that needs electricity, what, what recommendation? They can't go out and buy generators, what?
Well, they'll have 20, they'll have, the goal is to have given 48 hours of notice to make sure that they have contacted their loved ones or contacted their support organizations or gotten extra canisters. The question again is, goes back to, if they have their plan for a major catastrophe that's beyond PG&E's control, then they have a plan for this as well. And that's the plan they really should be protecting themselves against.
Got it.
But I will say, that if they also, if they have not identified themselves as a medical baseline customer with PG&E, we would ask them to also do that within the, within their account. We don't know if they are such people as you suggested. We don't have any way to know that they are on oxygen unless they tell us they are. And if they self-identify, we'll have them marked as such, and then we'll be able to know where they are, and we have a program to, to contact those people if there's a PSPS, to the point of going and knocking on their door. So we're really going to hone it in and coordinating with OES and the medical baseline community that they have at the county emergency response center as well. So we're going to coordinate those things.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Anything from the audience real quick? I know this isn't usually our norm, but, no? All righty.
Thank you.
Mr. Daniels, thank you so much for coming and spending the time explaining PSPS to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you. All righty, we get back to our regular public comment. This is your opportunity, three minutes or less, to get up and talk about any item you want to. I have three speakers so far. First one is Caroline Abate. I'm sorry.
Okay, a little change of topic here from the wildfires. City council members and the public, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. On the topic of, about how to solve the problem of mass public murders which keep happening in our society. In August, there were 22 victims who were just shopping at Walmart in Texas, nine in Ohio, and more recently in Odessa, Texas, in which seven people were killed. Why do these mass public murders keep happening? Many will answer with the need for more gun control laws. But back in the days of the pioneers, the pilgrims, the Revolutionary War, and our Civil War, there were guns all over the place, and there was no indiscriminate mass public killing of perfect strangers, including children and the elderly. Others will say we need more mental health awareness, but rates of mental illness were the same in those days as they are today. In fact, it was a much bigger problem then without today's advances in medical science treatments. What makes all the difference between then and now is a society that once respected and lived in harmony with God's laws. There was no abortion, no recreational marijuana or other drugs, and the family unit of one man married to one woman was the security of every individual, that in turn was the foundation of the order, strength, and stability of the entire country. There were no sexual education programs in public schools, teaching children they can be one of several different genders. Children from their earliest ages were not constantly viewing images of incredibly graphic violence on TV, movies, online video games, or reading about it in books as they do today. Instead, there was a Bible in the desk of every public school student, and they memorized the Ten Commandments, including "Thou shall not kill." We know that each person who commits any act of violence was not born to do that. At one time, each was an innocent child, and the question to ask is, what are we as a society doing to our children and young people to cause them to behave in such terrible ways? What laws and public policies have we enacted through our elected leadership that is affecting people's behavior in such a frightening and dangerous way? Thankfully, we live in a democracy. Please consider voting for candidates to public office who hold Christian values. Thank you for being willing to think about these ideas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Judy Peterson.
Mine's probably going to take more than three minutes, so maybe I should come back some other day. Because I have a couple of things that my kid said, you better get it out and get it off your chest, mother.
Well, get it out and get it off your chest. Try to keep it as close as you can.
Okay. Mine has to do with lights on, on Central Avenue. One day, I took an extensive drive around Buellton to look at streetlights and found that 98% of the streets had lights. I am asking for your consideration of lights on the west side of the street. The opposite side has utility poles, so none can be there. Some of us have spent thousands of dollars improving our properties there. Slowly, it is getting good. I understand that the city council approved $100,000 for decorative streetlights on Industrial Way. I agree, Industrial Way needs streetlights, but decorative? I was in the business there for 19 years and didn't have streetlights, but I know it's grown now. We would just like the average lights on Central. I have not a clue where any of the council members live, but I'm sure you have lights. I hope you will consider this thought. I'm sure all the council members know Central and McMurray were the first two streets in Buellton. And Holly can probably answer this. She probably knows what the post office was before it became where it is now.
Where it was?
Yeah.
Across the street over by the car wash, wasn't it?
Right. That bright yellow house. Now for sidewalks. I have photos with me that show, I'm going to look, sidewalks on the north end of Central on both sides, and the south end of Central across 246 on both sides. So my thought is, why can't we have sidewalks in the middle part of Central?
Nastified.
If we took a little bit of your property on your side of your lot, and then I'm sure Mrs. Tiffany would agree to have a sidewalk in front of her, and then Hemming has already put sidewalk in front of their house, and the only place that needs sidewalk is that horrible mess that nothing's been done with, with, where they were going to build houses, but obviously it hasn't happened. If somebody was to throw a match or something there, we'd all be on fire. So considerations for a sidewalk there would be appreciated. I watch these nice little ladies and their babies and everything walking up and down the street, going in between the cars, and somebody's going to get really hurt someday. And I'd love to have a sidewalk to go for a walk on. Like I said, I don't know where you guys live, but I bet you have sidewalks and streetlights. I guess that's all I'll really complain about. When are we going to slurry coat on Central Avenue?
Does every four years. One is Central scheduled, Rose.
Everybody else has gotten it, but not Central.
It'll have the map with you. Okay. Every four years.
No, the rotation's about seven.
Seven years to rotate all around the city now? Wow. I'll get that answer for you.
Okay, because it's bumpy.
I'll get that answer for you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
I'm not quite done.
Okay.
Okay. Before, I don't know what the maintenance project was, we got this letter saying that we will be laying down equipment on the city's lot. It says nothing about dirt, nothing about dried up, everything. I mean, it's a mess. I'm going to have to have my windows cleaned, my carpets cleaned, and the whole bit. Now, I'm sure, whoops, well, I had it here. I've got several pictures.
I've driven by it almost every day.
People come to my home and they say, what the heck is happening? I says, well, go ask the city of Buellton. I don't know. Now, why couldn't all of that stuff that's put there be taken where they're taking it now instead of making two trips, one from the lot and then to wherever they're going now? So that's, that's my theory. It was, it's been a mess.
We'll get it cleaned up.
So in the near future?
It should be cleaned up. The project is done, so.
We're going to wrap up today's.
They don't sign off on it. They don't get paid until it's all cleaned up.
Okay, now, the lot always had, you know, grass and stuff, which was fine when it got windy. We didn't get dust, nothing to complain about. But now, with all the tractors and everything, it's just fine silt there. When the winds come up, that stuff's just going to blow. So something has to be covering that whole lot to not make all that dirt blow. So, streetlights and sidewalks, I would really like your consideration.
And the corner lot. You got it.
Madam Mayor, just as a matter of course.
Please.
I visited Mrs. Peterson here a few weeks ago and spoke with her when she expressed these concerns to me at that point, and since then, I've had discussions with our, pardon. With our public works director. And as I understand, Rose has taken the initiative and contacted PG&E to discuss the possibility of installing streetlights on Central and the areas without it on the existing utility poles. So even though utility poles are there, that's a possibility, and they're going to get back to us here with.
Oh, you can do it on the poles that are already there?
That's our understanding. And so we're looking into that as, with regard to the sidewalk. When the city determines what it will do with its property there, a sidewalk will be installed as part of the development plan. That's typically when a, when a project is developed, the sidewalk goes in, and then we'll have to figure out how to deal with the intervening two properties that are lacking that.
We really need sidewalks there.
We'll look into that. I can't promise anything at this point, but we'll look into it for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My guy, kids said, Central Avenue is not chopped liver.
It's not chopped liver.
That's right.
Okay. And the, the third speaker actually is here for agenda item number eight, Mr. Porter. And the third speaker actually is here for Agenda Item Number Eight, Mr. Porter. So not public comment, we'll hold off on that. Peggy, did you have public comment real quick? Last chance to turn in speaker slips. Going, going.
Good evening, Mayor Sierra and council members. I was just wondering if possible, on the consent calendar, Item Number Three could be pulled for discussion. I'd just be curious to hear some of that report. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No other public comments. I am closing public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar. We do have six items tonight. The minutes of August 8, 2019, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2018-19 and 2019-20. Number three is the quarterly report for April 1, 2019, through June 30, 2019, from Visit San Diego Valley, Visit SYV. Then we've got the monthly treasures report, July 31, 2019, the rejection of bids for stormwater catch basin cleaning, and filing of an amended claim with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, SB CAG, for revised allocation of Transportation Development Act funds, TDA, for fiscal year 2019-20. Gentlemen, any items to pull?
I'll move for approval and pull Item Three for public discussion.
Okay, so, shall we vote on Items One through Six with the exception of Item Three? Linda?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andresic.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye, thank you. Okay, Item Three. Chanel, do you want to, this was your baby?
Well, with this, Shelby Sim sends us quarterly emails providing the report for Visit San Diego Valley, and this was the report for quarter April 1, 2019, through June 30, 2019. So I don't know any of the details in this report. He just gives it to us, and we report it to council. I know this is the way it's been done before, but in the future, if you want future discussions, we can do business item and have Mr. Shelby Sim come and present this to you.
That's probably a good idea. Basically, they show the financial, the income received for second quarter was $222,271, and expenses was $182,826. Ending balance for San Diego, Visit SYV, is $325,061. Then he goes on to talk about the membership and all their marketing campaigns, and how many homes they've hit, and trade shows. I did notice that none of their grand special projects this year went to any of the Buellton events, but I do know that they do that in the past with the Boo Fest and a lot of the other, I believe they help out with our Winter Fest as well. They're just, I don't, I don't know that there was anything that Buellton asked for help with with this one, so. Would you like a motion to move to approve Item Number Three?
With the stipulation to have him come in the motion.
From here on out, he needs to come and answer any questions.
Right.
That's a good one.
I will move to approve Item Number Three on the consent calendar.
All righty. Linda?
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andresic.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Okay, now we got a good one tonight. Agenda Item Number Seven is the recognition of Bobby Carubius's dedicated, 17 years of dedicated service to the city of Buellton. You started in what position?
I'm sorry?
What position did you come in at?
Just ground maintenance.
Ground maintenance and retiring?
As Park Foreman.
Park Foreman?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the council, as a parting gift, we want to thank you. Not only are you the Park Foreman who oversees just about anything green growing in our community.
Yes.
But you are kind of the unofficial, unofficial mayor of Buellton, I would say.
How did you get this far?
People, people know Bobby more than they know any other council member, or mayor, or city employee in this town. Bobby gets around, you have a problem, you're pulled over at the side of the road looking for something, or you've got a flat tire, and Bobby pulls over, and he's the one who takes care of everybody in our town. And I'm sure that's probably not going to change.
No.
No. But we wanted to thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we truly appreciate the service, the years and years of service.
I was glad to be here.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
We were very appreciated.
Working here.
Sometimes you might not have felt it, but you've always been very, very appreciated. Anyway, that is, that is for you.
Thank you all very much.
Do you want to open it, or does that?
I think you should open it.
Counsel always goes, Linda is amazing at finding just the right item.
Your sources.
She's very good at wrapping, too.
Apparently forgot to bring a knife.
A knife would be a really good idea.
A knife would be a good idea.
Would be a good idea.
Would you stand on it, Linda?
Clips, clamps?
Seatbelt cutter, hold on.
What you got, Jill? Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Officer Parker.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Go ahead.
I would just like to make a comment that I've worked with Bobby since he got here. From the minute he got here, I've probably helped him, talked him into taking the job because he worked next to the sewer plant, and we would see each other every day, and I was impressed with his work and his commitment, and I was thankful that he did decide to come. And he's become a great friend, and it's great to have him as part. It's a knife.
Now, if only you'd known.
Thank you again, Bobby.
I know, nasty.
One last thing from the staff's perspective. Bobby's been a treasurer member of the staff for a long time, long before I was here, but it's apparent just in the past couple of months how much he means to everyone, and we would just like to take this opportunity also to thank Bobby for all his years of service and to wish him well in retirement.
Photo up, Mayor.
Photo up?
Okay, come on up. Come up to the dais.
Right under the Buellton seal?
All right.
Speed in?
Yeah, there you go. Very good.
I know you're going to be busy with Steve's car show.
Yes.
And don't you have the flying flag because there's, they did this one?
Yeah.
Their trailer rally?
Yeah.
This week?
This week.
This weekend? This weekend? Next weekend? Okay, do we have any public hearings tonight?
Madam Mayor, we have no public hearings.
Okay. Councilmember comments slash items? I'll start with Councilmember Sanchez. Any comments, anything that's been going on around town?
Okay, no, I just, I missed y'all last week, and I'm sorry we didn't have a meeting in the second part of the month, but we fought through it.
I hear you kept busy. Okay. Vice Mayor?
I have a.
Comments slash items? Yeah?
Well, this would be an item. I think we're, I would say nine out of 10 people you mentioned Buellton, they don't, they don't think pea soup anymore, they think flags, Avenue of Flags. I think we owe it as a council to put a special emphasis on flag etiquette. We've got some pretty raggy-looking things flying, and I'm hoping that we can, without being, well, making rules, that we can encourage people to, or establish a depository where people could participate in funding for new flags that are needed. We spend a lot of money on our eight-by-twos, but I think we've got a lot of individuals that just, I think if we showed them that we're all ready to pull together and address our flag etiquette, just honoring the flag, taking how to display it, making, you know, maybe get the Boy Scouts involved, because.
It's time to see what those Democrats are saying.
They've been, they've been very good. And I would just like us to bring back for consideration, and maybe even a budgeted amount for flag etiquette and.
So you're saying local businesses around town, not the city?
Humans, not the city.
Residents, businesses.
The city's doing, I think we've made a major stride in having nighttime, you know, 24-hour flag illumination, and that's.
Thanks to Councilmember Sanchez.
That's exactly, Mr. Council.
Public works.
John Sanchez.
Do you know, I think sometimes, too, they just need to be, sometimes you don't notice it. I was shamed a couple times at the post office. People would come in and say, "You know you've got a tatter on that flag." And I didn't.
Sure.
So I.
You know, maybe we could cite a flag ambassador, if you will. Bobby was our ambassador to the mayorship, unelected.
You know, it hurt.
Perhaps we could, perhaps we could adopt something, but I would like us to, you know, it's not a major thing, but it's all part of our image. And I think if we allow this to continue, people just kind of pass us off. We had a lot of people in town the last six weeks, eight weeks, and I think we could, you know, John is basically, I think, single-handedly, with Rose's help, refurbishing our 50-year-old flag poles, and it's, I think it's time to pull it all together and show a little more spirit decor in how we display our flags.
Thank you.
So I would like to see that.
Councilmember Mercado?
Yes, I'd like to make sure we give a good thanks out to Scott during this crisis. It was nice to continue to get all the updates on a daily basis and on the beginning of an hourly basis, which it was really nice because when I came home with 3/3 of the fire, which is starting, I had to go take, do something at Durant's and come back. By that time, the power was off, planes were flying, and everybody in Thumbelina was watching it. So as you drove around, people who, all of a sudden, five families are out there talking and wanting to know what's going on, what's going on. Having that ability to give them the updates with what PG&E was sending out and what you were sending out, you know, people without power, what are we going to do for dinner? What are we going to do? Now, Ballard Canyon's going to get activated. So it was, I appreciate the fact that you were sending out all that information to us, and it went to good use. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember King, any comments slash items?
No, but I'll just dovetail on what Art just says. Yeah, I appreciate the fact that we were, you know, I was unavailable to come home, but I appreciate getting those notices.
Okay, and I just had a couple comments. First of all, I, what was it? City Manager Wolf and I went to two of the morning updates at Station 31 for the McMurray Fire. Councilmember Sanchez joined yesterday morning. I think we were all really, really impressed. It was like military precision. They had commanders for each of the fires and called out each of the different fire trucks, fire brigades that served under them, and they had that thing so, the operation was so well-run, I was, I was really just blown away. I mean, it was just, I have total confidence that if we had any emergencies between our law enforcement and our fire department, we are in very good hands. I also went to the 9/11 ceremony at 9:00 yesterday morning over at the station, and boy, 17 years already?
18.
18 years? It's just amazing. I did have one item. I, you know, we've been talking a lot about the cannabis, the grows, everything that's happening around Buellton, and the effects that it's going to have on our town. I was wondering if perhaps council would be willing to set up either somebody to come and speak to council, or to have a workshop about what's going on, what the county's position is, and what Buellton can do about it. I don't know. Are you guys up for a workshop, or somebody to come? What's the feeling?
Set up like a public meeting to.
It would be public.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be public.
I'm going to talk about.
Whether we would do something, say, at the rec center on a Saturday morning and invite the public, it would have to be fairly soon because a lot of decisions are being made, or whether we invite somebody to come to council to speak.
There's a, talking with Charlie Ury, I understand that the sheriff's department has a specialist in making the rounds. They talked about he may be willing to come to community groups for describing what's going on and their position, because it's changing. I know it's changing every day, but I'm not sure if you're, is it Eric, I forget the fellow's name, but if one of their officers is.
We have a marijuana compliance team, and I would assume he'd be the supervisor for that team.
Okay.
We have Eric, is, I think you referred Eric Rainey, is that?
Well, not Eric Rainey, but yeah, it was one of those. Charlie had sent information because there was a citizen that was concerned about a neighbor, and he passed it forward. So they said that their intent was to be available to alert organizations what you're working with before it gets out of hand and rumors go to this and that.
Well, that's why I was wondering if we should have maybe a workshop, or, I mean, I would like to have somebody who is following what's going on in our valley, perhaps the sheriff as well, and talk about, you know, I mean, right now, the county has pretty much just opened up the Highway 246, the Santa Rita AVA, to whoever wants to come in. There are, there's no limits. It's kind of scary, but I don't know if you gentlemen would like to have somebody come here and speak to you, or you want to turn it into a Saturday morning, a Wednesday night type of a workshop?
Must be a public awareness for the people.
For the public as well, yeah.
I think sooner than later, perhaps.
Maybe the public can go to the meeting.
Within six weeks, or four to six weeks, if we could muster it together. If the presenters are available, I think it would be more effective than six months down the road.
There's a meeting tomorrow, right? Santa Maria?
No, it's been postponed.
It's been postponed. The planning commission meeting has been postponed for tomorrow. We'll keep an eye on that. We'll be attending that. As the city council's aware, though, the debate surrounding the county's policies with regard to cannabis and commercial cannabis and cultivation of cannabis is heating up, particularly in the San Diego Valley area. We're trying to stay on top of that. There are a lot of moving parts right now. I think Vice Mayor Andresic's point is well-taken. If we were to wait several months on this, the debate is likely to be over, and if the city council and the city residents want to have any input into this policy debate, it needs to happen quickly. If the city council so directs, we'll get to work on setting up some kind of a community event, be it in the evening or on a weekend morning, publicize that to the community, and we'll find relevant speakers, both from the law enforcement side as well as from the policy development side, and perhaps someone from county planning and development, maybe someone from Supervisor Hartman's office. We'll pull some people together who can give us. We'll pull some people together who can give us the information we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
I have consensus.
It's important. All righty, written communications? None? Committee reports? No?
I had one committee meeting today, the San Inez River Valley Basin Central Management Area, and it concerns water that's held in these chambers. I think we've got a, we were accepting the, receiving the data management plan that has been provided to us. This is, Bill Bulow is the lead person on it, but he's gathering a lot of people to be specific, and I think all the communities are represented. The data management plan was turned over. That was the only action that the people, that the board took today, but it's moving down the road, and the bigger thing, and there were more and more local people are appearing, they're wanting to know how can they stay ahead of it, and they're using, talking about a website, you know, that a website will be, they're putting in a special emphasis on timeliness of the website, so you don't have the meeting tomorrow morning, and we're having a meeting tonight about what's going to be going on. So the next meeting is set for Monday, October 28, 10:00 a.m. in this room. Citizen Action Committees, CAC, those are the interested parties. They're the ones that are invested, they're dealing with, you know, they stand to lose a lot or get protection in a, again, government's running the ship here, so they're very interested in private parties. So that was today's meeting.
Okay, and yesterday, we had North County CAG. They've awarded a grant for trail studies along the riverbed connecting Solvang and Buellton, so we'll see what happens there. And the San Inez Valley Traffic Survey was last night, and I'm not sure I agree with the findings. They said on the west end of our town that they saw traffic doing 45 to 50 miles an hour. I think it goes a little bit faster than that on the west end of town, but they did say that Highway 246 needs a thinning, and Caltrans announced that they're putting around about on baseline and 154. So, anyway.
Hope you do.
Okay. Agenda item number eight, discussion and direction regarding one-year contract extensions for engineering services with M&amp;S Engineers, Inc. and Tetra Tech, Inc. Ms. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the original contract was awarded in September 22, 2016. It was for an initial period of two years, from December 8, 2016 to December 8, 2018, and during the November 8, 2018 meeting, council directed staff to return for extensions later on in the year after some more council discussions. And it was brought back to council in February and in March. And during the March 2019 meeting, council discussed verbally extending the contract services for six months. During this time, the water and wastewater facilities engineering services would be transferred over to Tetra Tech, and that has been done during this timeframe, and Tetra Tech has started on a few of the projects, working on the water side and assisting us with our permitting with AQMD, I'm sorry, APCD, wrong jurisdiction, for our generators, and also working with us on our sewer line evaluation, getting those capital improvement projects off to a start. So with that, we have provided attachments one and two, which is the proposed contract amendments for M&amp;S Engineers and Tetra Tech, and both have their annual hourly rates that they are proposing. We've selected a few of the rates that are comparable between the two firms. They're in the staff report with the city inspectors, the CAD, and the engineers, and they're relatively comparable as well. Technically, both firms have done good work for us, and staff is recommending at this point in time for council to discuss and give us further direction and consider that additional one-year contract extension for engineering services for M&amp;S Engineers and Tetra Tech.
All righty, thank you. I have a speaker slip, so first of all, does council have any questions? For Rose, I see Jeff here for M&amp;S. I do not see Jason Fessel for Tetra Tech. Any questions?
No, madam, they're not questions, but maybe a comment. You know, we've done a pokey-pokey dance around this idea of who's doing what and what are we spending for it, and yet we don't have the hard and fast. I think we've had two different occasions, Dave, Councilmember King, and I made an attempt to try to find out how the fairness was, because we were supposed to, when we made the, when we took on the second person, the second company, it was, it should have been all-new business, and it's not working out that way. And so since this day, I received your, Scott Wolf's analysis of our stormwater management services plan, and I would like us to not jump into a year lop-off. Let's maybe either get the numbers or let Scott give us his analysis of, both of our engineers are eminently qualified. They both are proud of their work, and they both feel they can do the job. I'm worried about the citizens that are saying, "How much are we spending?" because they look at the dollars and cents and what we're spending. So I, you know, we don't seem to have a fair equitable basis. The last time I looked, we were 30, 70 percent-wise of dollars spent went to one firm versus the other. And I would like us to just maybe, there's no rush right now, and I don't feel I could support lopping off another year. Before, when we did that, we weren't aware that Mr. Brzezinski had decided to retire, so that was, we made this, you know, this continue forward. So our change has been made, and we have a tremendous asset in your past services and your chosen field of planning, and I would like us to try to capitalize on that rather than just continue the, stretching out the plan one more year or two more years or something else. I think we need to face the, the original, the original plan was to have a different firm initially, and we're now splitting, but I don't think the split is equitable myself.
Okay. Before we get into a conversation, I do have one speaker slip. If anybody else wants to speak, Bruce, Mr. Porter, please step up.
Madam Mayor and city council members, I do not live in Buellton. I live in San Inez now, but I did live in Buellton after I left the Army Corps of Engineers almost 19 years ago now. I was an engineer for 25 years. Engineering in the public sector has its own special challenges, especially if you're a small city like you all are. I changed careers, but my heart has always been in engineering, so whenever I can, I kind of reach out and I talk to engineers out there, and I talk to other cities and governmental agencies about how their engineering's going. And so whether I'm at Vandenberg Air Force Base or down in Santa Barbara or talking to somebody like the Regional Water Quality Control Board, M&amp;S Engineers is just an awesome organization, and I think what you all are getting from M&amp;S is a true bargain. They're very robust, they're very wide, and they're very deep. It's an organization you can never afford to hire, you know, to build on your own. You just couldn't do that. But basically, what you have is very large organizations like Vandenberg Air Force Base, hiring them, they have a big enough staff, and they're training new people all the time, they're bringing new people on board, and somebody else is paying for it, and you all are reaping the benefits, and that's a really, really great deal. So as you think about, and Councilmember Drusick, I think you're doing exactly the right thing, asking a lot of questions. The ones I would ask you for these organizations, how many times have they busted the budget? How many times have they busted a timeline, and how many claims have they had over the years? The city has almost 20 years now to look back, or longer than that now. It's hard to believe to take a look at that, so I would encourage you to do that. I just don't know Tetra Tech. I can't say anything positive or negative about them, but I've always been very, very impressed by M&amp;S Engineers, and I guarantee you the base civil engineer out of Vandenberg is especially as well, or really the Army Corps of Engineers, it does its big work, big work, anyway. So that's all I had to say about M&amp;S. But as a former resident of Buellton, when I lived in Meadow Ridge and my kids went to Honita, it used to scare me to death when they walked across Highway 246 to get to school. So it took you years to get that little island in the middle of the road, and I know you all worked like dogs to make it happen over many years, and Caltrans fought you every second of the way, but thank you, thank you, thank you for everybody that has kids that you're able to do that. A huge victory for families, and I want to congratulate you.
Well, thank you. Rose, under comments I didn't talk about, our 150, our 246 Sycamore. Tell Mr. Porter what else we're doing.
We are installing flashing, rapid flashing beacons on our posts across 246 and also doing a road diet and extending a sidewalk to narrow the streets at that intersection. So we have much higher visibility, painted crosswalks, the whole nine yards.
That's awesome, and I'm sure your families will reap the benefits of that, so thank you.
Well, I hope so.
And thank you for everyone who's out there in your public service and doing what you do. It takes a little bit of special time and extra things to do that, so thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, I don't see any other public, any speakers on this item, so I bring it back to council for discussion and direction. Did you want Mr. Wolf to give, were you asking for...
I think this might be the, we haven't discussed this, but, and you haven't given us something so thorough, and you did that.
Very thorough.
And just for the record, so it's out there, I had a question asked of me by a council
member, having to deal with one very specific aspect of engineering contracts, and as you noted, or as I noted in the memo, as I'm hoping you picked up from my memo, the relevant piece of information here is it's very difficult to make an apples-to-apples comparison from what one city gets to what another city gets based on budget numbers. Now, it can be done, we can get down and dirty and spend a lot of our staff time and impose on other cities to spend a lot of their staff time to analyze contracts in light of one another. The caveat I would put forward with that is contracts are let at different times, and a lot of what contracts reflect in terms of pricing is based on the market conditions at the time. So if you have a contract that was let this year, you will wind up with different pricing than if you had a similar contract that was let the year prior, simply because of market conditions. If this is the direction that the city council wants to go in order to ensure that we're getting the best possible price, best value for what we're going to spend, I would suggest maybe an approach that looks something like this. The first thing I think it's necessary to do is to determine what functions, if the council's intent on having two separate firms to do this work, what functions should go to, what function should be grouped together? That's, I think, the key. Once we determine what those functions are, I would suggest we put together two separate requests for proposals so that firms can bid on each of those sets of functions, and we can get what the market conditions are going to allow for bids for those specific functions at this point in time. What we're dealing with right now are extensions on contracts that were let a long time ago, several years ago, anyway, and market conditions may change, so simply reallocating or rebalancing the workload between these two firms may wind up with a situation where we're not necessarily getting the best, the most bang for the buck. If that's the direction the city council wants to go in terms of determining what functions get grouped where, I would suggest that maybe the city council consider appointing an ad hoc committee of two city council members that can work with the public works director and myself to try and hash out some of the concerns and details in terms of separating those functions out, create those two groups, and then oversee the RFP process. If that's, again, the direction the council wants to go, I would suggest extending the contracts that you have before you, maybe not for a year, but through the end of the current fiscal year, which will give staff and an ad hoc committee enough time to go through this process and come up with a good distribution of functions and get some bids on that. And if we go through that process, you'll know that whoever you select is going to give you the best cost, that's going to be the best price you're going to get at that point in time. So, and there's a lot of moving parts here, and there's a lot to consider, but if we're not quite sure where we want to go at this point, that's the way I would suggest getting to where we want to go.
Okay. Now, my question is, you're saying to do an ad hoc, go to the end of the year, and then go to an RFP. Do you think, I mean, we're, almost, we're in the middle of September right now. That might be pushing it? Would it be easier if we went with the one-year extensions?
I'm going to rely on some advice from our city engineer here.
Just for clarification, he had said the end of the fiscal year, which would be June 30.
June 30.
Thank you.
So the extensions...
Okay, okay, got it, not calendar year.
I'm guessing there's enough time, Rose, if you don't think that would be enough time to go through that process, let me know, but I believe that's nine months. I think that should be adequate to go through that process.
That makes more sense, thank you.
And then we're starting the fiscal year with...
You said June 30?
Yeah, June 30.
June 30 is the end of the year, yes.
And that, then we're starting the new fiscal year with budget, with the ability to adjust our budget numbers to reflect the contract at the time that fiscal year starts.
I agree with that. I think that's a smart thought.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just, you know, while you're thinking outside the box, perhaps you can decide, does it, is it to our benefit to have two different firms? Or do we really need to say, "Let's get one or the other?" And I hate to see that, because every time we get our bills, "Well, what is this? Oh, well, that was a firm we had to get a specialty firm because they understand that type of paving," and we're going, "What?"
There, I think we're always going to see some of that, because there are some types of work that just are going to require someone with special, with different certifications or different specializations. But I think the issue of a distribution of work between two firms or whether we want to simply look at one firm that can do it all is something that we can hash out as part of the ad hoc committee process, and so if the city council either tonight or at the next meeting wants to appoint an ad hoc committee, then we'll get to work on that, and we can have something moving here probably by the end of the calendar year so that we can be finished and ready for the end of this.
You could put your professional advice of what kind of things work, because to just direct that this is what we're going to do, I mean, if, there may be another concept that is used for some of the services instead of, some of us have signed those checks, and they're very large checks, and I dare say it's probably one of our major cost factor items in operating the city.
It is, and then we have...
Because of our size.
Right. That being said, we have a lot of capital improvement projects going on. We're in an ambitious phase right now in terms of redevelopment and renovation of the Avenue of Flags. We have slurry projects. I think our city streets look pretty good in comparison to a lot of cities, what they're seeing, and that's going to be reflected in the amount of time and attention that the city council spends on these issues and the amount of money that the city council's willing to spend on making these things happen. So in the long run, the overall amount of money that gets spent is going to be determined by the city council. You hold the purse strings, you decide what gets spent and what doesn't, but our job as staff is to make sure that A, we can get these jobs accomplished that you need done, and B, that we're giving the public the best bang for the buck, and we'll work with the council to make sure that happens.
And with that, since we talked ad hoc, perhaps we could agree to bring it at the next meeting so people that might be interested, instead of trying to decide tonight, I'm not aware of anyone that wants to be in the ad hoc committee.
Oh, I think you've got five people that would be interested in doing that personally.
And then the ad hoc committee we'd be looking for would be simply two council members.
Right.
And I... And I do want to say from, legally, the ad hoc would make a recommendation to the whole council.
Right.
So you're not going to have the ad hoc, those two deciding, "Are we going to put out two RFPs, or one, or three"? That's for the five of you, but two people will need to dig and get their.
We've done ad hocs before.
Sure.
Well, I was going to say, Madam Mayor, that perhaps we could also have a disinterested party as part of that ad hoc, because we, you know, this is going to involve engineering, and there may be some things within, when we start to dissect as that ad hoc committee and say, "Well, can this firm do this? Can the, what Ed is saying, can this firm do that? Can this firm do that? I mean, where are you going to get the most bang for your buck?". And it may be that you have two firms, and that you, that ad hoc may come up with the conclusion that really the best bang for the buck is just having one. And if we could maybe get somebody that has some knowledge of engineering to be part of that ad hoc committee, and not a voting member, it wouldn't be a voting member.
I truly believe between Rose and our city manager that we have the knowledge there. If we don't, then we'll, then we could move from there. But I think keeping it to four people is probably a smart idea right now.
Yeah, I would leave that to the decision of the city council. The city attorney may weigh in as to whether or not we run afoul of ad hoc committees by bringing someone in other than a council member, but.
You know, where you normally see that outside advice is, in the RFP process, you'll have a professional screening panel before Scott winds up bringing, Scott and the ad hoc wind up bringing a final recommendation to the council. So that's where you're going to get your outside professionals. They're going to take a look at what's come in and say, "This is a way to go, or that's a way to go." That's the more common way.
All righty, we got direction?
If that's the council's direction, I'll, for the next meeting.
Do we need to vote on this extension? Yes, I moved that we extend the MNS and Tetra Tech contract until the end of the next fiscal year, or this fiscal year.
I'll second.
John had a comment.
I'll just take care of that in the ad hoc. My question was, how, how this could be cut up different, or, like, the stormwater can go to a contract for somebody different? It's my opinion that, you know, the costs, for one thing, is, I would say, more, it's just hasn't been questioned, and I'd like to see something like that, and other things kind of split up into more of a go-to-bid deal than an open-door type of deal. That's my opinion on it, and that's, and that's why I think some of the things should be decided. I mean, you know, kind of looking for the, my thing is going for the cost, and some of these things that we have, an intern comes in for $95 to come and dig a post hole, whatever an intern does, the things, the cost for engineering, to me, some of the things hourly is something that I think should be handled more, excuse me, in-house, even having an extra employee or more of a utility guy that doesn't, we don't have to spend so much money for single things, but that's something that should be handled with the in-house.
We'll do an analysis of that.
That's my concern is.
And find out what, you know, how feasible that is, and we'll report that back to the city council as part of this committee process.
Okay.
Perfect. So there was a motion and a second. Can we just take a voice, or since it's a contract, do we need a roll call?
I'd like, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember King.
Hi.
Councilmember.
Or just approving the extension of the contract to the end of the fiscal year.
End of the fiscal year.
No, thank you.
Councilmember King.
Hi.
Councilmember Mercado.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Drusick.
Hi.
And Mayor Sira.
Hi. Thank you. All righty, city managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few items for this evening. We had Battalion Chief Childers here earlier this evening with his report. He did not mention a critical factor, though, that I'm going to mention because I got a report earlier today from one of the other chiefs. The fire right now is at 85% containment. And as Chief Childers mentioned, we will see the fire department pretty much leaving town here by tomorrow afternoon with only a small crew left to do the last bits of monitoring for the next couple of days. I would like to offer my thanks to Deputy Alvarez for his contribution to my ability to give the council information during that fire. He was available to me by phone and was at the Incident Command Center and provided a whole lot of information that was able to supplement the information that the fire department was sending to me. So I would really like to thank him for his availability and his willingness to work with me on that. It was a great help. One of the things that came out of the fire and the, watching what happened in the community at that point, was that there were a lot of questions going around the residents, and there was some good information coming out from residents that were checking with the fire department and the county's websites with regard to disaster preparedness and such, but there was also some information that was not quite accurate. You know, rumors tend to generate themselves during this. And as much as I was tempted to jump online and make comments, my personal Facebook account is not really an appropriate tool for that. That being the case, I'd like to suggest, with the council's blessing, that I bring back to the city council, probably at the next council meeting, a draft social media policy, which will outline the circumstances under which the city will utilize social media for putting information out to the public. I would suggest that we start small. We put together a Facebook page and have it be only for putting information out, that we turn off the functionality that allow people to comment and ask questions, and refer people instead to using email and the telephone to do that. That minimizes the amount of debate or commercial use of the city's Facebook page. But I'll bring a social media policy back to the city council at the next meeting, and with the council's blessing, adopt that city, adopt that policy, and then we'll create a Facebook page so that the city can have an official voice in our local social media outlets to be able to provide that information in a timely manner to all the residents that subscribe. So with your consent, I'll go ahead and do that.
Wonderful.
Can I make a comment on that? We have had some meetings at the league that that can be very dangerous.
Yes.
Having Facebook pages and that, because it can get trolling on there as well.
Right.
I would rather see you have a policy, or I don't know with the rest of you, but just have a information page for Buellton that is, you do not have the ability to write back on it.
That's what, that's what I'm referring to. Facebook has the ability to turn off the functionality.
I wasn't aware of that.
It's fairly new. It allows for one-way communication. And I think that's important for just the reasons you're describing, yes.
Absolutely.
All right. And then lastly, just a, kind of a heads up, and again, looking for some city council, a nod here, or maybe a future nod, I'd like to bring back to the city council for discussion at a future meeting, probably the next city council meeting, a discussion that the mayor and I have been having with the elementary school district regarding a program that the mayor has mentioned previously, we're referring to it now as the City in the School Program. It's an opportunity for the city to spend a very small amount of staff time and possibly time from our city council members to visit elementary schools about once a month, give them small lessons on what local governments do, how we work, and give them the experience of making decisions on products, projects, similar to the way the city council operates and makes decisions on projects. I think, I've seen this function in other cities before. It's, like I said, very little staff time, almost no cost to the city, but the benefits are huge, both in terms of the students' ability to learn and appreciate what local governments do, but also it's amazing to find how many times parents will be expressing opinions on something going on in the city, and because the students have been talking about this at school, they will actually educate their parents on what's actually happening and how it actually works. So it's an interesting idea. I think the school district is enthusiastic about it. Again, I'll bring this back for discussion at the next city council meeting. I just wanted to give you the heads up. Great. With that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
All righty. And I am adjourning this meeting until Thursday, September 26.